Call this meeting to order. This is the town council meeting for Monday, February 13th, 2023. And we'll start with the moment of silence. Just want to bring up a couple of people who have recently passed away since our last meeting. John Doherty, we want to lift up his family, particularly his wife Sigrid. John was a very longtime resident of the town of Kensington and was active in the Kensington Historical Society, as well as the Friends of Warner Circle. He was, and he was one of our founding members. Is that correct? So John, John will be missed. Also Jean Adams, who was on Frederick Avenue. She was also a lifetime member of the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department. She also recently passed away. And then Roland Simpson, who many people know, he lived in Kengar and he passed away. Counsel, there is a, I spoke to John Gerson and they're looking at a February 25th celebration of life, probably at the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department, but I'll, I'll let you know once that's confirmed. Okay. And then I will lift up Anne's dad, who is in, in the hospital as well. So Anne's actually coming from us from West Virginia, as she's been with her dad. So we'll lift, lift her father up as well. Okay. If we could, is there anyone else that have somebody that I didn't include? Okay. If we could just bow our heads for a moment. Okay. Thank you very much. The approval of the minutes, I believe everyone's had a chance to review the minutes from the work session, as well as the January 9th town meeting. I believe Nate, you were the only one that made just a couple of little changes on the work session minutes. And I didn't see any changes for the, for the meeting minutes. So counsel, do you have any last minute changes to either? No? Okay. If we can get a motion to approve the January 9th town council meeting minutes.
Do it as amended.
As, no, that was the council. I don't think we had any amended to the council.
I'll move to approve the January council meeting minutes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you very much. Could I get a motion to approve the town council work session on the 30th as amended by Nate's two changes?
Do it again. I'll move to, to approve the, the meeting minutes from the session on January 30th as amended.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Connor, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Susan and, and Alex and the staff for getting the minutes out. Okay. And we're going to move down to the acknowledgements. We did hold the work session on Monday, the 30th to discuss our fiscal year budget priorities. You can read about that in the meeting minutes. We have been, Nate, do you want to take B? Do you want to talk about that?
That was very quick. I didn't think you were going to move that fast.
I'm sorry. I'm speeding up.
So I did, on behalf of the town, I testified. Actually, I was going to flag this not a big deal. It was, it was oral testimony, not written testimony. At the, the hearing for the Maryland Senate for Bill 16, which was Senator Jeff Ballstriker's bill in the Senate, was co-sponsored by a colleague of his in the House, and it was the safe, it is the Safe Access for All Roads Act of 2023. So I, I did two minutes of oral testimony. I was up there all day and was very well taken care of by our District 18 delegation, particularly Jeff's office. And very, they're, they're very gracious and it was a very long day, but very worthwhile because we got to advocate on behalf of the town for safer roads, as well as other, on behalf of other municipalities in the state. So overall, it was a very good experience. And that's now, I think it should be going to go of getting approval. And it seems like there's good, a good prospect of it passing this year. So we'll keep an eye on it and I'll keep reporting back to everybody.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. We'll move down to the 3418 Oberon variance hearing. Matt, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Mayor Council, we received a variance request from the property owners at 3418 Oberon Street. They had proposed to put an addition on the rear of the property during original county DPS review. They determined that the front setback did not meet existing regulations. Once it was determined that a second story was going to be added to the home. The county is classifying this as a new build, which kicks in our requirements for our side yard setbacks. We have posted the property as under variance. We've notified the neighbors and I believe Peter is here. He would like to, there's Peter. Okay. Peter, if you want to go ahead.
Oh, certainly. Well, thank you. So yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the, the house, we're not tearing out the foundation. We're not doing any, anything other than the original plan, which is really just to do an addition and expansion of the house. But the guidelines that sort of sparked the classification of the new build had to do with the existing front line of the house and the Montgomery County setback. So that, it really was more of a paperwork drill than a change in how we intended to do the work. So our proposal is not to actually expand into the side yard any further than the existing house, the way it is right now. It is really just to take, take it as it is and to expand up and add another floor above it. It does go back about five feet on the back as well, but that also would not encroach onto the side yard. So you know, there's an existing encroachment and we're proposing just to maintain it in its current location and to complete the build the way it was originally intended before it was reclassified.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I just know.
Sorry, Anne, go please.
No, I just wanted to make sure. And then Nate asked your question that Leslie, who's here in attendance, did send a note to the council just before the meeting that she maybe will be able to speak to or people can review, but go ahead, Nate.
No, I was just gonna say technically, I think it, it extends it an inch beyond, right? Or so. I mean, for all intents and purposes, it's, it's like the same, but I don't have any questions. To me, it was clear, it was very well articulated in the letters and it seems like there's more of a hardship on paper that's created by the county, the county's enforcement of it's, I think is about 40 yard, 40 foot setback or 25 foot setback from the front. So to me, it seems like a fairly straightforward issue, but thanks for, thanks for, you know, coming to, to, to discuss. I'm sure others will have questions, but to me it was clear.
Connor, you or Darren have a question or comment?
No, I'm a visual person. So to build on what Nate's talking about, I'm looking at the GIS website for the county, which I just think gives a very good visual depiction of why there is this unique scenario to that property and the property that abuts it to the east, 3416. The setback on that property in the public right of way is distinctly different and significantly greater than any of the other surrounding areas. And I, you know, it's to my knowledge from talking to the property owner that way back in the day, there may have been a desire to put a larger road where Oberon is and bend it to the left. And so that's why there's reserved public right of way. But looking at the variance, I think it does the minimum amount to achieve what would have normally been allowable if not for this extreme setback in the front, front plane.
Darren, any comments?
No, I guess I just, I, I want to, I'm looking at the plans. Originally, I was under the impression that, that you were taking the entire existing house down to the foundation, but not replacing the basement. Am I right that you're leaving the existing house and just building up?
No, I'm sorry if I misled that. We, we will take the existing house down to what you would call the first floor, which would be the ceiling of the basement. So we will leave the entire foundation as it is right now intact. And then we will take, if you were to walk in the front door and go up the few steps, we'll take what is that first floor, we'll build up from there. But everything from there up will be new, will be replaced. We will not change the location of the side wall that is the variance request, though. It will be built in the exact same place that it currently stands.
Okay. So I think what, what I'm hearing is you will take it down to the level of the first floor. So in other words, the walls on the first floor and the ceiling on the first floor are being removed.
Yes.
And then you're starting up from there.
That's correct.
Okay.
Because this home is a split level, correct? The current home?
It's, it's a, they call it a split foyer. Yeah.
Okay.
So it's two levels instead of sort of that staggered three or four levels that you get in a side by side split. So when you walk in the front door, you can either go up six stairs or you can go down six stairs or five or six.
Right. Okay. Any other comments from the, from the council?
We're going to listen to the public and then sort of give our reactions to where we're.
That's fine. Yeah, I always come back to the council. Matt, do you have any further comments before we open up to the, to the audience?
Yes, we received one public comment via email on Friday from Sharon Scott in support of the proposal. Ms. Scott is on the call if she would like to add anything.
No? Okay. I see, I see your shaking head. Okay. All right. We'll open it up to the residents. If you just want to raise your hand or, okay, Leslie, I see your hand. Leslie, you're on mute.
Sorry, I didn't intend to raise my hand if that, with Leslie.
Oh, sorry. Leslie Olson.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Leslie's on this call.
Too many Leslies. Leslie Olson.
I think I'm unmuted now. And we were able to get copies of the drawings from the town and looked at them. My understanding of, of how the variance is being, why it's being requested is a little different than the presentation. But because the house itself was built before the 10 foot setback. And therefore, when the addition was, when it was decided to expand the house by five feet and keep that same line, that new construction on the back of the house is within that 10 foot setback. And so new construction, they would need a variance from the town, not because they're going up two stories, but because they are doing new construction within the 10 foot setback. What the county has said, I, I don't, I don't understand that. I don't see it. But the rear of the house is being expanded by five feet. So there is about a foot and five inches variance. And that was in one of the drawings that we got. It was circled and, and makes sense. So my note to the council and, and to mayor, if that is correct, we, we don't have an objection because the variant, the 10 foot setback was not in existence. They are going up, but they all are expanding. And, and that would be within the 10 foot setback, but we have no objection.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie. Anybody else have a comment? Okay.
Hi, thanks for having me. And you know, of course, we live, we live just across the street from this property. And you know, and are generally appreciative that there are these sort of, I guess, you know, that the town oversees these kinds of things and that, you know, trying to keep the property lines in check. But in this specific case, we are in support of providing this variance because the house is already there. It's not going to change where their, their house actually sits. And I think the benefits of, you know, the renovation and, you know, improving their property, I think benefits all of us in the town. So my husband Stuart and I are in support of providing this variance for this property.
Great. Thanks, Savannah. And Stuart behind.
Dual meetings.
I just want to thank the neighbors for their, hi, everyone. I just want to be very appreciative and thankful for the process and the neighbors that have shown up here to support. And again, we're not trying to build a mega mansion or anything and working around the parameters we're in. So just want to thank everyone for being here and the support and appreciate the time.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does anybody else have a comment? I don't think I've seen any others' hands. So, okay. Matt, what would you like us to do? Do you want us to make a motion or we do, we do that next month?
General support. And then what we'll do is we'll prepare a resolution for the March meeting.
Okay.
In support of the variance request at 3418 Oberon.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any other comments to make based on what you've heard from the residents?
No, I, I, I'll just make a quick comment. I think that, you know, we do have a variance process and standards that we have to apply. And so I think we should make sure that, that when we voice our support, it should be in terms of what is put in our code. It shouldn't be based on popularity or anything like that. It should be, you know, when we apply the factors in the code, do, do we feel that the variance is supported? And in this case, I think it is. I think the original house was built before we expanded the side yard setbacks from eight to 10 feet. I don't think, you know, the, the people who built it or the current owners had anything to do with it. I mean, the, the reason, the reason I mentioned that is that it had any, you know, fault in this. That, that's part of, that's one of our standards. We think it can't be like a self inflicted problem. I think because they're not going beyond the existing foundation that meets the minimum necessary standard for granting a variance. And then I think it, 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 it's not detrimental to the neighborhood or the community as a whole, because I think that it, if you look at where the house is and the amount of side yards on either side and the distance between that house and adjacent houses, there's, there's plenty of green space. There's plenty of space between the houses. So for that reason, I would support the variance next month.
Thank you. Counsel, a general support from everyone so we can prepare a resolution for next week or next month, excuse me.
Yes, I was just waiting for Darren to go through the facts, kind of learn to expect that of Darren. So thank you, Darren. No, based on that as well, and a wonderfully clear written staff report, I'm in support of the variance.
Okay. And any further comments?
None from me. I'm in support.
Okay.
Same. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you have other things you want to do this evening, I think we're good now. And we'll have a resolution for the variance of next month.
If you leave, it's going to half our meeting size. So please stay.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Take care.
All right. Okay. Number three, the Joseph's Park. Connor, do you want to, you and Matt want to take that one? You're, you're muted, Connor.
See, Leslie, I want you to know what happens to all of us. The discussion of Joseph's Park began at a work group session last January, or January 30th, a couple of weeks ago, where the town is just looking at and discussing different properties within the town that we have and/or that we may be looking at in the future for long-term planning for the town. And as we looked at Joseph Park, which is a residential lot located at the corner of Plyers Mill and Wheatley, I will be honest, I more, more than anybody put forth the idea of, is this lot its best and highest use right now? It is identified as a town park. It is adjacent to my property. My backyard backs up to it diagonally. And in the 10 years I've lived here, I'll be honest, outside of one gentleman who was hitting golf balls in it one day, which wasn't great, it, it is not used as a park. It sits within 150 feet or so from St. Paul Park, which is one of our biggest and most active parks. And so I wanted to begin a discussion of, could this help the town secure resources for other long-term land needs that we may need in the business district? So this is to start a discussion, right? What is the current value of this property? Presumably its use would be sold to be a residential lot with that. There are some really nice things about this property, one of which is the tree canopy. So we requested the town staff bring in the arborist and the arborist has reviewed all trees on the property and has identified those as, you know, those that may be diseased and should be removed, as well as those that are in a, a strong, healthy state. And it would be our desire, if we do anything with the property, that we do it in such a way that maintains that tree canopy. So with that, I will ask Matt to formulate maybe more context around it, but this is just to start a discussion of a potential path toward disposition of this property.
Thank you. As Councilmember Crimmins noted, you know, we're looking at this property for some financial flexibility and move forward with maybe some other properties in the historic district that we may be able to acquire down the road. We did have property appraised. It was appraised at $450,000. You know, there is a requirement of the town to post any property sale in the town for 28 days. It doesn't necessarily require a public hearing, but we would most likely proceed with one at a council meeting. And as, as Councilmember Crimmins noted, it is zoned R60. Our anticipation is if we were to sell the property, a single family home would be built.
Counsel, any questions before we open up to the people on the call? On the Zoom? Anne, go ahead.
Thanks for the context and I want to thank the town staff for working to get the tree inventory done. I think that's useful. I haven't had time to do this, but I would like to take the tree inventory information and maybe visit the site with a couple of the Greenscape Committee members who have been looking at our tree canopy and get their thoughts on whether the specimens there are, any of them are of a particular value that they should try to be preserved, but still allow the site to be useful. So I'd like to be able to do that. And second thought I have, and I appreciate Matt, that you pointed out, there would likely be a public hearing and there would be public notice about this, but I think it would be useful to also maybe directly notify adjacent property owners and those who are immediately in the vicinity. I'm sure Connor has talked about it with his neighbors.
Anne, I am so glad you brought this up. I, I did. The one nice thing about a bus stop is you largely get to meet all of your neighbors. I, to your point, yes, the public, you know, there would be many public hearings, but I did speak directly to several nearby neighbors. The two that abut this property are Patrick O'Connor. He's to the south of the property along Wheatley. He has no objection to it. And then the Ramirez family, which is my neighbor on St. Paul's Street, and they abut the western property line of this along Plyers Mill Road. They too have no objection to it. They both, you know, even with the idea that a house, in fact, the comment that struck me most was from Stephanie Ramirez, who said, you know, as it stands as a park right now, there is no fencing around this property by either the, the, the residents or by the town. You know, Stephanie's point is people could stand in the park right now today and stare into her kitchen and it's a little off putting. And whereas if it were a house and a neighbor, it would add to the fabric of the community without, you know, lessening the enjoyment of parkland because we have St. Paul Park directly across the street. We did talk to other nearby neighbors, one of whom also expressed a, it would make sense to build a house. It really is a residential lot. But you know, another consideration of just, well, it doesn't need to be activated, quote unquote, as some park with an identity, just it sitting vacant as a green space to be discussed as that has value too. So all of these ideas were, were put forth.
Nate or Darren, any comments?
I mean, I guess, sorry, you want to go there?
No, go ahead.
I guess, yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I agree with Anne that it'd be important to hear what the Greenscape Committee members think. I looked at the tree inventory, noticed that three, the eight trees were ash and will eventually die. How long that is, who knows? But I think it's still important to consider that. But it's a comment you made struck me that I wasn't, hadn't thought about before. You said you're presuming that it would be a single resident, a single home. How, how do you come to that conclusion that it wouldn't be a, you know, back to our thrive 2030 conversation, a duplex, you know?
Well, yeah, I guess that's a very good point, Nate. Let me amend my comment and say, zoned R60, I presume it would be for residential use confining to whatever the, you know, the zoning properties of the county are. If it were duplex, it's not a huge lot. It's 7,500 square feet. It's got multiple setbacks because of it having two front planes. It just makes for a smaller building envelope. Could you put a duplex? Sure. It'd be tight. But again, it's whatever the market will allow you to do. I think what I meant to say is just, I, it would be for residential use, right? There's not going to be an office building built there. It's not going to be light industrial built there. If something is built there, it would be housing.
Well, just to be clear, I mean, Thrive is a, as a plan, they have to pass the, the ZTAs in order to make it. So not that it couldn't change, but right, right now it's zoned for a single family home. So. Okay. Darren, any comments?
I just support moving forward with consideration of the public process about changing it from a park to a residential home. You know, we've talked about this for over 10 years. It is, the maintenance is a, is a factor for staff. It's so close to St. Paul Park that that's where people go. They, they just don't use this park for recreation. And so I don't mind disposing of it at this point and, and using the money for other priorities within town.
Okay. All right. We'll open it up to the audience. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Leslie Olson.
Well, I, I have a couple of comments. I know this is, it has been discussed 10, 15 years. And it is, the park itself is not flush with the sidewalk. There's a little bit of an incline. It's never really had the benefit of any benches or any amenities that you could actually use to enjoy it as a park. So it is just primarily a green space. Access to it is kind of climbing up a little, a little hill, no big deal, but not something that you take a, you know, stroll. I mean, you just lean over to get up the little incline. So it is difficult to have a discussion about selling it because no one uses it when no attempt has been made to make it usable. I like it. It's green space, but if the argument is that nobody's using it, then to me, the council should explore making it usable and then finding out whether it's, it's something that is, you know, for the future, more suited to a single family house. But it specifically has been cut out of any type of amenities that would make it a park. So as a green space, it works wonderfully. That's just my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing any hands. All right. So Matt, how would you like us to proceed? Just?
We can, we, we can put it on a future agenda and notify, have, you know, a public hearing. If you'd like, we can hold off. We have a meeting on March 13th. You know, we can wait later in the year. We're not in a rush. We just kind of want some direction on what to do with this. Like I said, we're looking for some financial flexibility to do some other planned acquisitions possibly down the road. So this would just set us out, set us up for that future acquisition.
Okay. Counsel, do you want to hold a hearing next, next month? Council, do you want to hold a hearing next, next month?
Um, I, I mean, I would, I'd like to see Anne for Greenscape Committee. Is that enough time for them to go visit the site? Cause I, you know, I would like to make sure they have ample time to participate.
Yeah, I think I can reach out after this meeting and hopefully arrange to do that in short order.
Great.
And then in terms of the hearing, I, I do think, and may, maybe this is what you were going to say, Connor, but I don't trust your consultation of your neighbors, but I think maybe working with you and Matt to figure out when you draw a circle around the park, who are the residents who should be notified of the hearing in particular because of their close proximity to the property.
Well, we would definitely do that. So.
So we'll use our standard format for when we have a variance hearing. There's specific properties that we have to notify, and in this case, we'll probably go a little further than that to allow the, pretty much the entire block know.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that given, I mean, even just Leslie's comment about it having intrinsic value because it's a green space. I think it will, if, if that comment is indicative of how others feel in the town, I think, you know, we should try to get the word out beyond just the immediate neighbors. But I'm, I'm in support of moving forward definitely with the process to consider it.
And I, I would include the one on Plyar Mill across, directly across the street from.
Yeah. And Matt, I'm erring on a greater areas better than a, than a narrow area. So that whole block of Wheatley. You know, obviously we know about it and the Ramirez know about it, but across the street you have the Alcatraz, you have the Moylelands along Plyar Mill. You know, I would just notify them all. If you can see it from your house, you should be notified.
Yes.
Mayor Council, do you want the staff to hold an onsite meeting with the neighbors before the public hearing?
I think I would give it would be really helpful. Um, I don't know how it would work for staff. Maybe you could do a a daytime meeting and then we could also schedule a weekend meeting where the council could be onsite. So you could catch people who, you know, just put their kids on the bus and catch a group there and then catch, and then we could do a Saturday.
Obviously, Matt, I would volunteer for the council as I am two and a half feet from this property to go over and, and participate in any off hours.
Okay. All right, great. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We're going to move down to number four. Anne, or do you feel comfortable speaking on this topic or since you were asking?
Yeah. I, I'll give a little background and then I'm going to ask Matt and you to also provide context, particularly since you participated in the MML chapter meeting on Thursday that I wasn't able to join. So we've, before the council for discussion in the current legislative session is House Bill 459, County Municipal Street Lighting Investment Act, which would authorize counties and municipalities to acquire street lighting equipment either by purchase or if a price cannot be agreed upon with Pepco, and in our case, that's who owns the streetlights by condemnation. And this would also allow local governments to enter into not only, you know, agreement to purchase the equipment, but also agreement to purchase electricity with the provider, maintenance agreement, et cetera. The benefit of being able to do this is that you, as a local government, will have more control over the equipment that's installed. So for example, most of the streetlights in Kensington are not LED lights. And we have not been able to work with Pepco successfully to make that transition. That's a big goal for the town to be reducing its carbon footprint and something that Nate and I are working on with the Sustainable Kensington Team. Also, we can realize cost savings from that. And you have been in the trenches, Mayor Tracy and Matt, working with other municipalities on these issues for years. And so I'd like to go on record with written testimony supporting the legislation, which would make it possible for local governments to then negotiate and our, again, in our case with Pepco and try to get some movement on an issue that's been pretty intractable, intractable for some time. So I've circulated the testimony with the council. Haven't received any substantive edits. Everyone has said it looks good. But I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Tracy and Matt to provide additional context.
Okay. Well, I think other council members could definitely chime in here too. I know with the municipalities, it's been a huge frustration. Not just because, you know, the bill that Al Carr, who was our delegate, was trying to get through, didn't get through. And I know Aaron Kaufman has picked up and he's trying to get it through this year. They've made some modifications. But you know, with selling it to the, or getting the Pepco to agree to sell it to municipalities or counties, if you will, they they want the Public Service Commission to come up with the scheme in which they will, you know, allow this to, you know, a contract with them. And it doesn't seem to be in our favor. And I don't think the Public Service Commission has done its due diligence by telling Pepco, this is what you need to do. So we put a tremendous amount of investment of staff time and legal means to last year. And while we won, we didn't really get anything out of it, except the Public Service Commission said, well, go back and talk to the municipalities and they didn't really change anything. So I have absolutely no problem with the option of buying streetlights. I think that should be on the table. But I, I don't trust Pepco or the Public Service Commission to come up with something that is not ridiculously expensive because their deal was we will sell you your fixtures at a ridiculous amount of money. You will pay to put in the LED lights and you will pay not only for your power, but you will pay us to maintain them. Okay. That's not a good deal. So. But I do support going. I don't think it hurts to ask, but I sure as heck, my personal opinion, let another municipality try it first and see how it goes. Cause I don't trust them. So I don't know if Connor, Darren or Nate want to make a comment. Don't all speak up at once.
Well, Darren wasn't muted, so I thought he was jumping right in. I, I mean, I share similar sentiments in that it, you know, voicing your testimony, I think the written testimony is wonderful. That's why obviously no substantive comments from me. I think as written, it's great. Submitting it on the town's behalf, I'm in support of, I have, you know, no problem with entering our voice into support for the bill by Delegate Kaufman. I do think we took the lead last cycle. And I, at significant cost, not a lot of return, I would love to see another municipality kind of be the guinea pig. Right?
Darren, any thoughts?
No, I, I, this date predates me on the council, you, maybe even in town. You know, Pepco has a cash cow in, in the streetlights and not just the streetlights, but the, the maintenance that they're charging us that they're not doing. So I'm, I'm more than happy to proceed on this. I, it's probably not a great analogy, but I feel like this is tobacco litigation. You know, at some point the dam will break and somebody will, will, you know, be successful in purchasing the lights from Pepco and, and, and the new model will, will, will serve as a model for, for future negotiations and litigation. We, I think we've done a, a big service last year. And so I'm hoping that other, you know, municipalities will, will step up and, and share the load.
Nate?
Yeah, I mean, I largely agree with those sentiments. I know that we did a lot last time with the, the tariffs and the LED conversion and you know, we, we, we had some fairly large expenses associated with that and I don't know why, what we're being asked with sharing some of the costs and how that fee was put out there, like how, what, what would that be? Really used for and.
Yeah. The Village of Chevy Chase wants to share. We, wants us to buy into what? Half of $3,500?
So our town attorney, Sue Ellen Ferguson is also the attorney for Chevy Chase Village. And she provided them with a sum of roughly $3,500 to represent them with regards to negotiations with Pepco on trying to purchase the lights. The village manager with Chevy Chase Village has asked the other municipalities to share in the costs. So we would be sharing amongst 3,500, not 3,500 each, 3,500 each. My understanding of talking with town attorney Ferguson this afternoon was that there were at least four municipalities right now that were looking to join Chevy Chase Village.
We know what we'd be obtaining your services for, or it says to acquire streetlights from Pepco, certain streetlights. Is it, we're helping them, Chevy Chase Village acquire them?
It would be for essentially trying to get a framework together on purchasing them. There's, there's not a lot of information right now. Cherry Chase Village is looking to move forward with purchasing their lights. And a number of the other down county municipalities aren't short yet. So town attorney Ferguson kind of is, is willing to take the lead on this and working with some of the other municipalities. So.
So my opinion would be to, I mean, I fully support us having more autonomy and ownership potentially of our streetlights. That's, I think, seems like we all agree on that. So thanks Anne for testifying and providing that. And I obviously support the bill, but how it translates from the bill to what they offer and how we negotiate with that, I think we're still a little bit a ways away from that. So I would hesitate of committing any resources to until we know what we're actually getting for those resources. You know what I mean? So I, I guess I just want more information before I would say I support providing more funding to that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I do feel like we've, we carried the load ourselves last time around. And I, I think the other municipalities should, should do it this time around. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of money. But I just feel like, you know, and I, I want to remind everyone too, that we probably have more streetlights than any of the other municipalities. We do own some, not a lot, but we do own some. But you know, by owning them, we now have to maintain them. And we have, we probably end up hiring a staff person in order to take care of what we now have as our utility. So there is some cost with that in the savings from, you know, changing them to LED that, you know, people, when they have a streetlight that's not working, they don't call Pepco anymore. They call us. So just as a reminder. So Al, I saw your hand up. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Good to see you all. So yeah, thanks a lot for all of your efforts. And I just want to just, just add a little bit of information to what was already said is that this, I think the request for supporting along with other municipalities, Sue Ellen's effort, that's a, that's a parallel effort that started in April of 2022. So back in April of 2022, Pepco filed a, a new tariff to make some tweaks to, you know, the terms and conditions under which they offer their street lighting. And a number of municipalities chimed in on that, you know, I think led by Washington Grove, Chevy Chase Village and Chevy Chase section three.
Three.
And, and that involved into the Public Service Commission saying, go back, talk about it. There was a series of meetings and so on. And what's being negotiated is what's called a pole attachment agreement between Pepco and potential municipalities who might want to purchase their lights. And I think that, you know, the village and section three and Washington Grove are seem to be pretty interested in purchasing lights if it becomes a realistic option. And so far it hasn't really been a realistic option under, you know, the current regime. But anyway, I think it's complimentary to the legislation. And, you know, I know the town did kind of take one for the team and supporting the, the rate case 9655. But anyway, just wanted to add that context. Yeah. I think Sue Ellen's been making great progress on this negotiation front that are, you know, also brings the policy of municipalities getting better service at a lower cost, you know, closer to reality.
Okay. Thanks, Al. A, a quick question now, if you can come back. Why, why is the Public Service Commission not been able to get Pepco to just change the lights over to LED? Is it because they have wanted an increase in order to cover that expense or what?
Yeah, I, Pepco is pretty far behind other utilities in other states and even within Maryland.
Yeah. BG and E has already done it, hasn't it?
BG and E is far, you know, far ahead. I don't know why that is. And of course, you know, Pepco did have a proposal, but it was so ill conceived and poorly vetted that, you know, municipalities hated it and the Public Service Commission rejected it. Yeah. The PSC is, I don't think they're used to hearing from municipalities. I don't think they, this was necessarily on their radar screen. Or I mean, they're starting to hear more and more from municipal customers, but and their processes are very slow. I mean, they're basically like a court system. So, you know, things take, take months and years that, you know, to us seem like no brainers. So I don't know why the Public Service Commission hasn't done more. They should have been doing more to get Pepco to, you know, modernize their streetlights and provide better service and better rates.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If I may, Tracy, Al, I have one question for you as well. Yeah. So there's the pole attachment agreement that they're working on. But is there any discussion? Has there been any movement toward a light maintenance agreement as well? Because, you know, one of my concerns is if you purchase them, when you go to do maintenance, you know, last I heard from the, the hearing last year was, yeah, there's like two or three subcontractors that you can hire. But essentially you have to go through Pepco and you have to pay the rates that Pepco sets for maintenance to these lights. And it strikes me as another area to your concern where municipalities could win and still could lose, right? You get the right to buy them and you might buy them. But the cost, because the costs are set by largely by Pepco might be something that long-term you find very unattractive.
Yeah. Well, that's a really great point. I think the goal is to have the same system that they have in Washington DC. So in, in DC, they acquired the lights from Pepco in the eighties and they just pay electricity and they were able to hire whoever they want to do the maintenance. That's how it works in a lot of states. And I think that's what, you know, the goal is, but you know, Pepco has been throwing roadblocks in front of that goal.
Okay. Thank you, Al. Is anybody else on that? Have a, was that Anne? Did you have something?
Yeah, just a minor point. I shared this with Mayor Tracy and Matt, but another avenue that we could explore through discussions with the MML chapter would be looking at the PSC and commissioners will be up. Some of their terms will be up. And there's an opportunity to appoint new commissioners and to have municipalities' voices heard in that process. And identifying this as a priority, not just the ability to have ownership, but the concerns that Connor just raised and Tracy that you've raised and Matt as well about, you know, making it a meaningful option. So I just want to put that out there because it could be something that we raise with MML.
Yeah. The, we didn't actually talk about the commissions. I actually was in a meeting where we talked about the public public works, the Board of Public Works. We did talk about that, expanding that with Brooke Learman. But we did not talk about the Public Services Commission. So but that, that's, I mean, that's an excellent idea. I don't know how I, I assume the governor appoints those people. Probably.
It looks like it. I, I didn't have time to do too much digging, but from the little bit I, I read on the website, that's what it looks like.
Okay. Well, the, we have the Mayor's, Maryland Mayor's Association meeting this week and usually we go over to see the governor. So maybe we can mention that when too, if we're there. Okay. All right. Anybody else in the audience have a question or? Seeing any hands? Not seeing any hands. All right, so Anne, I think we can get a general consensus. Everybody's good with Anne turning in written testimony. Let's do tomorrow. Everybody's looked at it. Good? Okay.
Thank you. On that, I may need to ask for Alex's assistance because I'll be traveling from West Virginia to Maryland tomorrow and I'm not exactly sure of my schedule.
Wait, just send it to Alex. You'll get it there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's move on. Number five, oh, just going to get him sharing. Oh, wait a minute, we, we're not going to give, are we going to give Chevy Chase Village any money? Do we want to share in the thirty five hundred dollars?
I, I think it's a little too swishy right now. I'm, I'm opposed to it. I don't. I would say no.
Okay, so consensus there? I have one no.
I already said no, not now. We, let's wait until the ask is a little firm. You said, we don't need to carry the load, but I don't even know what that load is, to be honest. So we can get more information and maybe down the road, but.
Okay. And you're, you're okay, we're just saying no, not, we're not ready to do anything else.
Yes, keep us informed. Let's get more information.
Okay, Darren, can you go with that?
Same.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so let's go down to number five, DRB update.
Sure. There's just a few properties people ask about, so we thought it would be good to just. Put it out there. I know we're going to cover one oh five oh nine summit specifically in the town manager portion as well. The two that I want to talk about immediately and then I'll turn it over to Darren. One zero four zero one Connecticut Avenue. This is also affectionately known as the Baker's Union Building. Which sits right out here in front of Town Hall. There had been a contract purchaser agreement that was drawn up. It had been listed for sale. A contract purchaser came into agreement and then they do what's called due diligence. There's a term of art in, in. Real estate development known as sharpening the pencil where they really tear through all documentation and. And they, they really fine tuned their estimates from a cost standpoint. And I bring this up just to say that this is how. Sometimes commercial development works. We were notified last week that the contrast purchaser has pulled out of that deal. So the property owner, the Baker's Union and their broker. Informed us that they're going to go back and look at how they reposition and remarket the property and they will look to put it back out. Sometime likely in the next six to twelve months. Because some of the feedback that they heard, which they are seeing across the industry is just, there are economic factors, right? Interest rates and other things as well as market factors such as the cost of construction. That just led to the project being unviable for the contract purchasers. So. There's, this is a long way of saying there's nothing moving on the contract, on the Baker's Union at this point. We expect. Likely we'll hear something hopefully in the next six to twelve months, we may actually see it relisted on LoopNet. And, you know, at such time that it comes back, we will keep the, the public informed.
We knew what the purchase price was?
I did not hear the purchase price. I don't know that that was ever made in public because it never actually finalized. So the second.
Wouldn't be a good swap for Joseph's Park, I'm guessing.
I will make the ask. I mean. Who am I? I've got four kids. I can be embarrassed by anything. So. But yeah, it would, it, you know, when I heard that there was a contract purchaser, I was, you know, excited that there might be an opportunity to see redevelopment of. A building that I think could be in the best interest. But now we, we just wait and see.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Thanks.
The next is the Modena property. Sorry, I'm going to come back to Medina in a second. The Kensington Crossings property, which is one oh six. Nine, one oh six nineteen Connecticut. That's where Hawkins is currently located. This is obviously the one I've gotten most calls about because there's a fence up. So this is just to say, the project is finally slowly. Moving forward in the sense that they are starting to. Clear the surface of the property. They did examine a little bit more. They did some soil quality testing. They have applied for and received the demolition permit from the county. But not yet from the town unless Matt comes in and tells me something has changed since last week. And so it is getting, it is moving along towards. The removal of the structure and clearing the property for redevelopment, but still moving slowly. One question that was asked, at least this is what I've been told. I have not been able to verify. But obviously some people were curious what might be happening with Hawkins. What I have been told is they are looking at a site to relocate. And actually for them, they found a site that, potential site up off of East Goody Drive in Rockville. That is actually more convenient for them as far as, you know, where they have to bring their stuff to and from. And there's a lot of landscaping and stonework and the, you know, Erwin Stone. All those complementing businesses are along that area. So I don't know that for fact. I haven't talked to Hawkins. But that's what, what I was told by other parties involved.
Well, it's more of a light industrial area. I mean, it's definitely more fitting for, I mean. It's Hawkins is really nice when it has all the flowers, but when you start loading up mulch and everything like that and firewood and. Things.
I, you know, it, it's just an anecdote. I don't know that it matters, but it does sound like timing may be. Coincidentally good. It, it sounds like the condition of the structure is deteriorating quickly. And so it's become more of a safety concern, even being able to operate within it or rather underneath it. So. Looks like, you know, timing somewhat fortuitous here.
Yeah, this seems better.
Yeah, the last one is just a quick update. It's not identified specifically, but the cafe. In the historic structure at Modena off of Metropolitan Avenue, I talked with Modena who will be running that cafe. They have completed the refurbishment of the interior. The exterior has been done for a while. And the latest is in my discussion with Janet today, they are filing for their permit for operations. Their license with the county this week. And they anticipate they will be in receipt of that and should be open sometime in March.
Great.
I will be prepared to come back at the March meeting and tell you if that is true.
I know things get dragged out. I mean, I don't think it's done purposely by the people that are trying to open the business, but. You know, just waiting on some particular countertop can take months. I mean, it's just crazy.
They, they did have that. And then the unfortunate reality, we hear it often, is they've also had to wait on inspectors. From the county and it's several inspections that have to be done to close out the inspections and just getting that all scheduled. You know, is just a bit of logistical gymnastics.
Yep.
Darren, outside of what's in the town manager section, anything else you want to add for one oh five oh nine summit?
Yeah, I will just give an update and, and sort of ask for guidance from, from how we proceed. The, the flats project, I mean, the residential part of it is not really that controversial of shifting. I think the, you know, first with the pandemic and then emerging from the pandemic and now with sort of uncertainty and inflation. The use of the twenty five units on the first floor. Had shifted frequently. Originally, it was going to be retail, I think, and then. They were sort of became these live work units where, you know, somebody might be a psychiatrist, work, living in the back part and, and practicing in the front. Or artists. And, and I think as more for view of, of the viability of that market has come out. The developer is, is sort of moving away from that and would like to move towards some other aspect that is. You know, the more residential in nature. Obviously, the, the, the site has limits on the amount of residential. And, and the live work units were a split between residential and commercial. So they are proposing to go to the planning board, planning staff and convert the twenty five live work units. Into what I believe would be sixteen short term rentals. Furnished units that would be sort of like hoteling of a sort. And then nine of the remain, the, the remaining nine units would be. Just straight multifamily housing. So that's, that's change one that they're contemplating. And then the second one is that we've always sort of understood the amenity space to be in the basement. Where, you know, there wouldn't be much exposure to the street, not much natural light. And he is, they're proposing to move that to the roof. My question when, when mentioned that was, well, okay, I understand that, that HVAC is an exception from height. On the roof. What about this? And, and my comment wasn't really, I, I didn't really care what the answer was. It was, we are not in a position to evaluate that issue. I, and we're not, I don't, I don't think we're in a position to, you know, support it. And, and at least the initial response was. That the amenity use on the roof was not subject to, I mean, first of all, it's similar size to what's currently approved, but it's also. It's not subject to, it wouldn't violate the height limit. So planning staff has asked us for a letter expressing our views on those two changes. My personal view is that they don't upset me. I've never really focused too much on the interior use of the spaces. On the first floor. And, and I think that amenity space on the roof would be. Would, would make the experience of the residents better. But, you know, option one, we could sort of just decide. Because this is not in the agenda. I don't think we could do anything tonight, but that we could. At the next meeting, move forward and, and send a letter to planning staff and say that, that these changes are fine with us. Another alternative would be to send it to the Development Review Board. For review of these two changes and then come back to the council in March. And, and I guess there are other possibilities that maybe I haven't thought of. So I just wanted to toss that out there and, and see what people thought.
So just to be clear, the amenities for the people who live there, these are not public amenities. These are, instead of having a gym in the basement, they're putting in a barbecue and a, some tables. So you could go up and have a party on the roof. Is that what I'm?
That's, that's correct. And, and I, I believe that is a critical difference between whether that would be allowed. To be on the roof or not. If it's restricted to residents, then it is allowed to be on the roof.
Okay, because that, that's not a public amenity.
I can't remember what the, now I know a building amenity for the residents.
Right.
The Lindy. Ice Lake has similar amenities on the roof.
Oh, a lot of condominiums and apartments have things on the roof. Yeah, especially taller ones because they get good views, so.
Right.
Dan, did you get a sense from planning staff? The change of the twenty five live work units to short stay, so those would not be, you know, permanent resident. They, it wouldn't be occupied one hundred percent of the time. It's going to change calculations as far as, you know, the, the parking requirement and. Traffic circulation, but I don't, are they requesting a, a new traffic study? Do they have any, you know, updated figures? Or is it just, hey, it got approved at the higher amount. We know it'll be a lesser amount, therefore it'll fit.
Yeah, I don't know enough about the, I, I think any difference would be very minor. But, but, but you're, you are correct that what has been approved would have more intensive parking and traffic. Load than backing off to more residential units. So it would be. Lower than, obviously higher than what is currently there because what's currently there is a vacant lot, but, but it would be lower than the approved current use.
Yeah, I. I asked, I was, had a phone call today with a resident and member of the DRB. Specifically about Summit Avenue, just giving updates on what happened at the county level with the county executive's. Capital Improvement Budget whereby he. Demonstrated that the, the Summit Avenue Extended is not a priority to him and attempted to remove it. It was subsequently negotiated to remain in, but it got moved yet out further now from FY twenty seven. For initial planning and acquisition to FY twenty eight, but that also means a potential finishing date of somewhere in my.
Thirty one, wasn't it?
Yeah, my grandkid's lifetime. Which I, again, I'm told we are supposed to have flying cars by then. So. You know, it, it is a concern. I, to your point, if there's time and we're going to be bringing this back up in March. I would, you know, recommend that we take it back to DRB. One, DRB reviewed this plan several times. And while the changes are minor, just to make sure that they, you know, changes like these do go back through the process. Again, for those who are, are listening, the DRB doesn't make decisions. All they would do is make recommendations back to the council. So this gives the DRB a chance to review it, talk about it, and then produce a recommendation that would be. Read in to the meeting in March. So I think there's time to, to do that.
Yeah, I may, I, I also would like to see it go through DRB. Just because I know that, you know, what are they, what are the potential trade offs? I mean, it seemed like minor decisions, but. You know, for example, we never got really clear answers on what they were going to do for the green building. Were they going to put solar? I can't remember and what they were proposing. This would have an implication on whether they put solar on the roof, right? So. I'd like for it to see it to go through DRB. Just so there's the process for people who have the history of, of, you know, vetting this, these, these plans. And also just a question, Darren, if you know, from the, was it nine, the nine family units, are they. Proposed to be at the same proportion for moderately priced dwelling units that we had with the original plan? Or will they all be MPDUs?
That's a good question that, it, it's one of those things where I trust the county to review that. I mean, he's proposed. Twenty five percent MPDUs. And so if the number of units goes from seventy five to eighty four, then. I would imagine that twenty five percent would be applied to the eighty four, but, but that's a certainly a, a good question to ask. The planning staff.
It sounds like we need to take this to the DRB and then you all can come back at the March meeting.
Yep.
I think that would be good.
So for those in attendance who might want. To attend, once we have it scheduled, I've, I've got to work on scheduling this now with DRB members. We will post it to the town calendar at t o k dot M D dot G O V. And put it out through our town e blast. So. Sorry for the, you know, the, the subtle pitch, but if you haven't signed up for the town's newsletter and e blast, please do so. By going to t o k dot M D dot G O V. And that way you'll be notified of when the DRB will be scheduled sometime between now and the March meeting, which is.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, so sometime between now and March thirteenth.
Okay, good. Does the audience have any questions regarding the DRB report? I saw a hand go somewhere. Joan?
Hello, I, I just thought maybe I should pipe up. Leslie Fried and I are both here from Kensington Estates Civic Association. And we're, we're actually quite concerned about the, the project as a whole. And I'm afraid that there are. The spin on the traffic impact, the stormwater impact and even the schools impact is. Is optimistic in the extreme. And so I'm, I'm also concerned even about. The change to those, those units. I suspect will have more of a traffic impact maybe than has been planned. And, and so. I'd just like you guys to know that, well, we're, we were slow to come to the, you know, looking into this. But Leslie and I are actually meeting from some, with some of the county. And state people about traffic. I would very much like to see another traffic plan done. And so we will be requesting it. I, to my understanding. There is not another study planned by anyone and the builder has not requested it.
Joan, if I can ask a question, who are you meeting with and is. Planned in your discussion to talk about Summit Avenue Extended at all? And if not, can I make a pitch that I really hope you bring that up with? And if not, can I make a pitch that I really hope you bring that up with whomever you're meeting? Because my singular view, not, I do not speak on behalf of the council with this next statement, is that that project was the significant project actually identified by the county to help provide relief. And it is the county that even though they know that is the only significant project, they're the ones that keep pushing it further and further out.
I, yeah, I, I, I think that we would agree that um it's, uh, it's an area that's been neglected for too long. And there's clearly, um, if, for those of us who live on the other side of Connecticut and, and in, right under that intersection, um, it makes sense to do something about traffic right now, even without this additional stress. Um, and so I'd be happy to mention it to other people we've talked to. We have one appointment with um, the estate highway uh official. I don't know that he's going to do more than just try to answer our questions about you, you know, the, the current plan. But um, uh, we would, we, we plan to put it in comments to the planning board. And um, and we will indicate where we think that the current infrastructure is inadequate.
Okay, yeah, just, and I'm very thankful to hear Kensington Estates um coming on board with that same thought. The more voices that are raised to this, I hope that Rockville is listening. Cuz my concern beyond what is happening within our border is what's happening outside our borders. As you look at projects that are being proposed and approved north on Kenzie, uh, Connecticut, uh, north and east on University, obviously Chevy Chase Lakes just came online. And then going down Knowles to Strathmore, all of the housing down by Strathmore um that has, is in the approval process. It just means more traffic moving through Kensington and Kensington Estates and the county continually putting off the one project that they themselves identified, beginning in 1970, what, six, 1976? As the, that which can provide any significant uh improvement to traffic. And we found out again this year that that project is not favorable to the county executive. And he once again moved it further and further out in, in the budgeting process. And um, so your voice added to our voice and others hopefully would be wonderful. So I'm really glad to hear that. Thanks, Joan.
Hey, I do, this is, this is I'm rarely in a meeting when there are three Lesleys. I just, the one thing I wanted to mention is when we met with the planning board, one of the folks at the planning board, she mentioned the traffic impact analysis was done December 11th, 2020. So it was during COVID. And when you look at the table and the date, the times, it's, it's just not consistent with our reality when we watch the traffic um at that intersection. And it certainly impacts folks in the town of Kensington as well. That intersection between like 3:30 to like 6:30 in the afternoon. Um, and then the one last thing is when we looked at the um, the diagram is they have one of the ways to get enter into the building, the flats of Kensington is through that parking lot where the um Wine and Company, the Knowles Station. So that's like gonna be one of the in, you know, in and outs. But there's parking on both sides. So if they're gonna take away some of that parking, what are they gonna do with that parking? Like where are people gonna park who go to those establishments, be it Wine and Company or for ice cream or whatever? If that
There's supposed to be a garage in, inside this building, so that's why
It was unclear to us if that's who uses, and that's one of the questions we're going to have for
Right.
We're meeting with the developer, who, it's only, who's gonna be, have access to that? Because if you go to some of these buildings that are retail and what have you, only a small part are for the public and the rest is for residents. And if you have 100 residents in that building, you know, and 166 spots, you, it's unclear if that will meet any, cuz you're gonna need parking for employees as well. So we just wanna hear about that.
Well, we're, we're not, we're not, we certainly understand that the, the uh, the studies that they do are always not quite our reality. So we, we agree with you 100% there. And part of, you know, you can see the number of cars that are parked on the vacant lot right now because those are all part of Wine and Company. Those are probably the employees and, and uh, so we, we certainly understand that concern and ha, and share it. So I, I live on the west side, I'm on Dietrich, so I, I know all about that side of town. Nate lives there, he knows about the problems as well. So we um, we, we share the traffic concerns. But that is why we really need that Summit Avenue Extension. And what Connor didn't mention was, you know, our county executive is really pushing White Flint. Well, a lot of those people are gonna be coming through here and headed down to White Flint. And, you know, as well as the, the big um redevelopment at Holy Cross, which will include, I think, a senior uh nursing home type facility, as well as single family houses, as well as uh townhouses. So, you know, all that on a little two lane road. So, anyway, lot coming our way. Joan, I'm sorry, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Me?
Joan. No.
Sorry, I, I, I muted myself. I'm still stuffing my dinner in my face. So, um, there's a lot I could add, but I think, um, you know, we, what Leslie and I are doing, just trying to get our group up to speed. We're trying to uh position ourselves where we can um advocate for the best scenario. I, I, I suspect it is too late to stop this. Um, and, and I, I'm not against any building there, but um, we're just really concerned about the scale and the, and the current problems and I feeling that things are inadequately addressed. So um, I will sign up for that newsletter. Thank you. And um, and uh try to be more active. Um, I will try to reach out and, and give you uh emails, et cetera, so that, I'll put my email in the chat. Um, please keep us uh posted. We'd very much like to work with you. And, you know, I, I said, I'm, I'm just learning, don't know, you know, how a lot of these things work. So thank you for your time. Any help you, please just keep us posted.
Okay, well, the, the development review board meetings are open to the public. Uh, so that will be announced, so you're welcome to come to those meetings. Um, they typically don't take comment from the public, but you are there and can listen. And, you know, after the meeting, if you have any questions or something, uh, I'm sure Connor would be and Darren, who chaired the um DRB, would be delighted to stay and talk to you.
Okay, thank you.
Darren, did you make, wanna make another comment? I'm sorry.
I, um, no, I guess I, I would just wanna ask that um, whenever a, a neighborhood association like Kensington Estates or Parkwood or um meets with county officials or, or us, um, I'd just like some indication that, that what's being said is the is attributable to the Citizens Association and not, and I don't mean to pick on Leslie and Joan, but not just what Leslie and Joan are interested in. So, so we have public meetings, we have agendas, we have votes and things like that. And I, and I, obviously it's a little bit less formalistic when it's a citizens' association. But I, I do think that there ought to be some assurance that it's not just a couple people who are, are motivated. And then just to build a little bit on what Connor said as a, as an example, because I've had this concern for years now. We, we get projects in town. We, we have 100 apartment, um, senior apartments on Knowles. We have this project, which is about 100 apartments. All around us, we have massive development. We have the Lindley down in Chevy Chase Lake. We have projects in Wheaton. We have the Kaiser facility up in Aspen Hill, where I looked at their traffic projections and it was 1,000 trips per day. Orders of magnitude higher than, than anything we're gonna get in Kensington. And none of the groups that, that show up to protest our little 100 unit apartments show up to protest 1,000 trips per day in Aspen Hill, which is going to draw the same cars through Kensington. Right now, before this project is even built, we have massive backups going from Summit to Pliers Mill out to Connecticut. We have massive backups on Knowles to Connecticut. Those aren't going to the little apartments that we're, you know, 100 unit apartments that we're considering. Those are going to existing and almost freely approved projects all around us. And so I, I, I just have concerns that we focus too often on projects within town and ignore the, the growth that surrounds us. So, again, the only, because of the way that, that the railroad tracks go, there are only two ways to increase the north-south flow in Kensington. There's Connecticut Avenue and there's Summit Avenue. And so I think that a concern about traffic that doesn't support Summit Avenue is not a um rigorous or, or meaningful concern. That's all I wanted to add.
Well, I appreciate that. Um, actually, um, I'll let everybody know that on next, uh, the 21st, I think that's a Wednesday, when is the 21st? That is, you guys, uh, yes, Tuesday. Uh, Darren, Connor and I are actually me, meeting with the Rock Creek Palisades Civic Association at Newport Mill uh Middle School to talk about the Summit Avenue Extension because they support it, but they wanna more, have more information because where is it? Why is it keep getting pushed off? So we'll be attending that meeting to talk about the um Summit Avenue Extension. So, you know, that's, I mean, we need help for the, this, the neighborhoods around us to push the county into getting this done and to funding it. Um, it's a big, it's basically a bypass of two major intersections. I mean, it's crazy. I mean, you get on Summit Avenue and you're basically backed up two Knowles to get to the light at Pliers Mill. I mean, that's, uh, that's not good. So um, you should be able to get further along. So um, anyway, so we'll be, we'll be meeting with the, uh, Rock Creek Palisades Civic Association next week. Uh, Joan?
To that point, uh, Joan and Leslie, we're happy to meet with any and every. And we've done it with Parkwood, with Jeff and his group. Uh, to Darren's point, it's great, you know, we have to try and figure out, you know, as an individual just coming cuz they're interested or are they speaking on behalf? And so when there's a formal engagement of, hey, we're having a meeting, it's Zoom, can you pop in and give um, you know, you, uh, kind of the, the town's position on things, we are happy to do so, right? I mean, the more we can collectively bring more voices together to understand our, um, you know, the town's position on Summit Avenue and just to update. Some people don't understand that this struggle, we've been, you know, the town has been advocating for the Summit Avenue Extended officially, I mean, predating 2012, but 2012 was our most recent sector plan, our development plan. And it advocates for Summit Avenue Extended, but this goes back to the seventies and we are still fighting the county because the approval and planning and actual um, uh, construction of it is all in the county's hands.
You muted Tracy.
Joan, one more comment, we need to
And I don't, yeah, I don't wanna change how you're meeting. Um, I, and so Darren, I thought you made excellent points. Thank you very much. Um, and I don't want to alarm anyone saying that we are meeting a county official. It's, it basically, Leslie and I have been on fact finding missions. We're trying to educate ourselves so that we can, um, you know, ex- explain things to our members um, and, and then organize comments. And so um, so we're really, and, and neither one of us are trying to advocate for any particular position. Um, that's not what we're doing. Um, so um, we'll be happy to um lend our support with, for the Summit Avenue Extension. I think that that would be generally supported in our area. Um, but I'd also like to extend an invitation uh to you to, if you would like to join us at any of our upcoming meetings. Um, we'll, we'll have um combined uh in person and virtual in general. So I will keep you abreast of our schedule. Um, and if you think that it would, um, you would like to come, you have the time and would like to uh participate, I would, I would welcome your participation.
Great, thank you so much, Joan. We'd be happy to, uh, you know, if you send us some dates, if then it works for, for any one of us on the council or myself, we'll certainly uh make an effort to attend. Great, okay, um, I think uh we're good. Uh, you're gonna set up a DRB meeting and then bring something back in the March meeting, correct? Okay. All right, so let's move along. Uh, number six, uh Sustainable Kensington, Nate and Anne.
Want me to go, yeah? Okay, so um, we, we didn't, I don't know, I can give a quick update on the, the meeting that we had last week. But we've formed the group, which was originally the Green Team. We've changed our name to avoid uh confusion with Greenscape Committee, the pedestrian bicycling working group and uh Mobility and Traffic Committee. So we're now Sustainable Kensington. In your packet tonight is a very uh immediate request for feedback and approval of the survey that we would like to send out. Um, a pulse survey, as we're calling it, just to town residents, business owners and workers. Who uh, this Friday, we'd like to send it out. Um, and the, the, the point of this is just to get the sense of what, what general issue is related to sustainability. Folks are, are, are interested in pursuing um in the longer term as a town. So the survey in your packet is really meant to just kind of gauge these longer term interests to, you know, in some ways introduce the, the group to the community. Um, in addition to the, the regular ways that we post it and talk about it in the journal and so on and so forth. There's an article that was drafted by one of our Sustainable Kensington members, Kate DeWitt, that will accompany it. But the survey was, was done by um, by the, by the group. Uh, it was led by uh Karen Fadley, Craig, Ken Amaditz and Daphne Wagner. And I think it's a pretty good, fairly quick survey, again, to get um interest from, from our, from our town residents. Um, there's an educational component to it, like I said, it's to, to give people ideas of what we mean by sustainability. What are some of the things we could strive to do? Uh, and all of this is gonna be a key input into how we pursue our Sustainable Maryland designation, um, certification designation. So there are various levels that you can achieve. We feel, after having done an inventory with the whole team, uh, that we have probably already done a lot as a town to qualify for bronze certification or what is the initial level of certification. And we just need to go through a fairly rigorous process of documenting it, making sure that we have done those things and submitting it. Uh, there's a tight timeline that we're under between now and June, actually probably end of May, when we would need to submit it. Uh, and it requires putting together, um, one, the survey is key to it. Uh, two is an action plan and then three is doing the submissions. So we've inventoried all of the 90 potential actions you can do to get certification. And like I said, I feel like we have a pretty good, um, pretty, we've made a lot of progress already, just what we're doing in the town towards sustainability, but there's certainly more we can do aspirationally in the next year or two. And that's where we wanna not only do an action plan, that is to achieve this initial certification, but to already start mapping out what we wanna do for the next level, to really, you know, push more um, more ambitious and more innovative things, I would say. So that's really what these 10 questions in the survey are trying to get at. So, did that cover everything, Anne, in terms of what we, you know, what we're looking for and what, what we've been doing over the last couple of meetings?
No, that sounds, that sounds good to me.
Nate, can you tell us how you plan to circulate this survey?
Yeah, so um, the plan is to do it via, the, via electronic survey on Survey Monkey and also to make it available in hard copy to hand out to the businesses and also apartments in case people aren't on the list, on the listserv. Those are the two means. We only have two weeks to do it. It is not at all intended or expected to be a full representative sample. Uh, it's meant to gather input from residents on what interests them. Uh, it's meant to gather input from residents on what interests them, you know, would they like to attend a gardening class? Would they be interested in potentially doing a rainscapes, uh, program and putting in a, a rain garden? Uh, bio retention on their property? Are they interested in understanding what their energy use is by doing greenhouse gas audit? Would they like the talent to pursue, uh, renewable energy on town hall or in its vehicle fleet? Those sorts of things will give an indication of which actions we want to put in the plan to start to pursue.
And since our, uh, our e-blasts go out beyond our borders, you, you do want to keep it within the town? Is that correct?
We want to keep it within the town because this is a very, it's very focused on, you know, how we want to use our resources, our budget, our, you know? Your tax dollars to, to pursue sustainability. So that's why we've focused the representation, membership of the, uh, Sustainable Kensington on residents. Because it, it is focused on the town. And one way that we've, you know, that there's just some mechanical issues with how we send it out. And the knowing of the listserv goes to people beyond the town. Um, we're, we're, we have a question in there about which it's meant to be, um, confidential, uh, or at least trying to be anonymous. Um, there is a question on there on what street you live, work or have a business to try to make sure that it's still, you know? Generally the town residents or business owners or, or workers.
Okay. Matt, do you think, uh, a postcard with Survey Monkey would be a good idea? I'm a, I don't know what, um, what is the percentage on our e-blast notification of, of actual town residents?
We, so we don't have it broken down, um, that specific, but, um. Alex and I talked about this last week when, when Anne and Nate brought it to, to our attention. And, you know, we think, you know, using the Survey Monkey with the added street address, we could narrow this down pretty easily. And, you know, if there's a few that get, get through, you know, it's not, you know, it, it benefits everyone within the.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Um, does it, um, if you're done, I can ask the counselor if you want to continue. Do you have anything else?
Oh, I'm done, Anne. I don't know if you have anything else now.
Okay. Connor, Darren, you have any questions? No.
I do not. Nope. Thanks Nate for the rundown and, and for the.
Does anybody in the audience have a question? Not seeing any hands. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah. Uh, thanks Nate. Um, interesting survey. I'm just wondering if you could explain a little more clearly what the rush is? I mean, why are you trying to get this done so quickly?
Cause we have two weeks to, well, we have a timeline for submitting and this is a requirement. For the Sustainable Kensington designation that has to make it into an action plan. That needs to be drafted based on results of the survey. So we have a agreed timeline amongst the group where we basically have till the end of the March to collect our survey. Um, our survey results in order to stay on track for submitting. It's not an easy, it's not an easy task of just submitting to get the designation. And actually Alex, I think has spent a lot of time sifting through what we have to, you know, working with our, our Sustainable Kensington. Um, teammates and identifying what we have to do to document it. We have people who have done an entire inventory of each of the actions. So we just need to be able to understand which ones we want to prioritize or need to prioritize. Um, in terms of the long one, long-term ones we want to put in there for now. Um, and, and keep with the timeline. Otherwise we will miss this submission date, which only happens once a year.
And, and the results are going to be used to do what then? To prioritize objectives for Sustainable Kensington? Is, is that essentially it or what?
Yeah, it's going to help to guide where we focus the attention of our team members for pursuing, um, for her pursuing actions. So this plan, the action plan that we have will have a kind of like a short-term part of it where we're implementing. Well, where we're documenting and submitting for Sustainable Kensington designation at the bronze level. Things we've already done. We just need to tie up some loose ends. We might need to publish an article. We might need to have to do a small event or something to the, you know, to that extent. Um, but really gathering the documentation. Then there's a whole nother set of things that we could do that we just want input from our residents on where they see us moving in terms of sustainability. If we only have a certain amount of resources, do we want to put it into building a community garden? Or do we want to make an insect hotel available? I mean, these are examples of some of the actions that you can do. Or do we want to put solar on town, on the town building, on, on town hall? So just to get, to get some feedback on where we want to say we're going to head over the next couple of years in this action plan. For, you know, these longer, medium to longer term things we want to pursue.
Great. Thank you. Um, what sort of response rate is going to be acceptable? Will allow you to take the results of this survey and say, yeah, we have ample support of the town, townspeople. To, to move ahead on this topic or that, that subject.
Yeah. I mean, we don't, like I said, we're not, we're not at all indicating or pretending that it's going to be a representative sample. Uh, so there's no statistically significant number that I could give you. Um, if we get five responses, I think it'll be pretty, you know, we'll have a good indication that we don't have. A good understanding of where we want, where the town wants to go. But, you know, if we have a hundred responses, I'd feel more comfortable. Um, but when it comes down to it, Sustainable Kensington team is tasked with doing this. And we're seeking input because it's something that we want to get. I can't give you a number. I don't know, Anne, if you have a number, we don't, we did discuss a specific number for feeling comfortable, but we.
I mean, we know that you, um, with the work with the pedestrian and bike safety working group, got an excellent response to that survey. That was broader than the town.
Yeah.
Um, but that gives us some hope that we would have decent response. Um, and also I would note that, um, we've got the business community working with us to do some outreach. As well as, um, the committee members. And we'll, we'll speak specifically, I think with the apartment building managers as well. Um, to try to make sure we get a good outreach that way. And then of course there are additional opportunities for input from the public. As we develop the action plan and bring it forward to the council, um, it will be on the agenda and will be open for discussion.
Yeah. And if we feel like there's a part of town or that's good that we're getting, you know, data on location. So there's a part of town or segment of our town, you know, demographics that are not representative, represented well. Or there's no responses, we'll do our best to get input from them. But again, we're up against a pretty tight timeline. So we'll do our best.
Okay. Uh, just two more questions for you. Um, um, I know you said you want to confine this to Kensington residents or people who work in the town. Is that correct?
Or businesses.
Right. Um, does, does the response offered, uh, offered in one F, question one F? Which is none of the above, doesn't that allow for non-Kensington businesses or residents to, to respond to the survey? Is that a bit of loophole?
I suppose it could be, um, but hmm. I mean, I think question, um, yeah, I mean, it could be, it could be that we remove that. I'm not opposed to that.
Uh, my hesitation here Nate, sorry, is just, there's probably a number of loopholes that are in this. This is not meant to be scientific. One could easily be a resident outside of town and fill out the survey and select any street name to indicate that they did. You know, I think what we're just trying to do is solicit as much feedback as we can get, uh, to help us identify and prioritize. But also to do it within the timeframe so that we can apply for designation this cycle.
Yeah, I understand. And, and I'm just offering a, a helpful suggestion. That's all. It wasn't meant to be, uh. Anything beyond that. Finally Nate, just a question. Um, are some of the questions worded in a way that you know what the response is going to be? I'm, I'm thinking like number six.
Wait, was that a question that was worded in a way that you knew what the response was going to be, Joe?
Number six.
The answer to your question must be yes. Um, okay. Which one?
For example, I'm just, and you know, just offering some helpful suggestions here that, you know, if you're inclined to take them, that's fine. If not, that's all right too. But, um, should the town of Kensington promote renewable energy adoption and energy efficiency among residents and businesses? I mean, who's going to say no to that? I mean, just really realistically, that might be a question among others that, that you know what the response is going to be. Uh, when you put the question out.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. I mean, but this is about using our resources. Do people feel like we should use resources to promote those things? That's I guess the question for all of these. Do we want to, do we want to prioritize these? I mean, I suppose we could, you know, if we were really trying to get into the nitty gritty, we could limit their responses to a couple. They would only be able to pick a handful of them and have a limited number of choices. But, you know, we just want to get a sense if we're going to pursue putting, you know, doing a full energy audit for town hall. Potentially, you know, doing a study on how to put solar on town hall. That, you know, that there is, you know, there's some, there's support beyond the team members who are very passionate about these interests. It issues and why they expressed interest in being part of the team in the first place. Um, so I'm okay, I'm personally okay keeping that. Cause I, I think if, you know, we got some that were, no, you know, we don't, then I think we'd want to think twice about doing that. But I, but I do see your point around the, I mean, I see your point on, on that, but I also see your point. And I'll take your point to the first question on, on the none of the above. I think that we can remove that.
Great. Thanks. Um, I hope this is a successful survey. We can't say that about all the recent surveys in, in town, but, uh, hope this one works well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, okay. Anything else? Good. So let's just do a quick run through. If you have anything that, uh, was not on the agenda, um, regarding the numbers, if you want to report on, um. Connor, do you want to go first?
All right, Tracy.
I'm sorry. Did you have something else?
Just wanted to make sure we got, we got approval to, uh, not approval.
Oh, for the survey?
Sending it out. Yeah.
Okay.
With the, the one question, remove that option, remove. I, I'm fine with removing what Joe was suggesting.
Okay. Um, council, you're good with the survey as is with the one amendment? Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. All right. Uh, Connor, do you want to add anything in the, in the report?
Uh, the only one I would add, it was brought to us by one of our, uh, businesses, um, is that, uh, Baby Cat Brewing is, they. They have always seen the last several months as their kind of soft start. And they are, uh, really looking at their kind of grand opening coming up here in March. And they will coincide with St. Patrick's Day. And so they are going to be having a, uh, St. Patrick's Day, um, festivity. The St. Patrick's Day this year happens to be a Friday, uh, March 17th. It is a ticketed event. Um, the tickets will be through the website, Eventbrite. And so if you go to Eventbrite and, and honestly, if you just Google Baby Cat Brewing, St. Patrick's Day, you should find it. I found it. Um, tickets go on sale beginning February 16th. So I just wanted to make people aware that, that that event will be occurring.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Um, I think they should be advertising that pretty soon. He said about a month out. So it should be.
Yeah, I think coinciding with this Friday, I think Friday, right? The, the tickets being available, there'll be more. They, um, to Leslie, if I think Joan dropped off, but the other thing about the e-blast, it's not all just meetings. Uh, we try to promote our local businesses and events and we solicit from them and, and try and make sure that everybody around knows about these things. So they owe us, they being Baby Cat owe us their, um, advertising their poster, whatever they're putting together for it. So that we can push it out. So if you are signed up for those e-blast updates, uh, you'll get that as soon as we receive it from, uh, Baby Cat.
Yeah, it was on there. Uh, they had the Instagram. I know. The Instagram, it was on it today. Yeah.
Well, then my hope is we should be seeing it tomorrow. What were you going to say, Darren?
Oh, I was kidding. I said, let's not tell Joan about Baby Cat.
No. They, it's too late. It's already out.
I think they've done their fact finding on that.
Yeah, they, uh, and this, this event will, I, I think it's, it's a pretty long event. I mean, I think it starts like in the afternoon and goes till nine o'clock at night.
Right. It, um, they anticipate beginning at 3:00 PM.
Yeah.
And going till nine. Um, they will have, I believe, two different musical acts that will play during the day. Obviously, you know, if you are thinking of attending, please, you know? Hope for good weather. Um, but there will be some indoor capacity and then they have a tent outside. And, um, they will use the parking lot behind Johnson's Edition Dram. Um, there will be no parking in there that, uh, evening, that afternoon and evening. And they will use that greater space, uh, to accommodate, uh, a larger capacity. They've worked all that out with county. They have their permits. Um, they are, uh, moving forward. This is just a one-time event.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Uh, Nate, you have anything else you want to bring up?
Hmm. No, I think I'm good right now. Nothing else.
Uh, Anne?
Thank you. Two things I want to, um, mention tonight. First, um, I want to report back, uh, many people in the town and, and with the staff and council attended the Anti-Defamation League. And Montgomery County Police Department training that we held on January 18th. We had about 80 people there. Uh, it was a very informative, um, training and discussion. I want to thank everyone who helped make that event possible, not just Alex and, and Matt, um, Tracy, but also Lauren Dworkin, Pastor Pat Allen and Jamie Boston. From the Racial Justice Committee who helped with that. Um, unfortunately, the antisemitic, uh, and other racist incidents have continued in the county. And I know will be a continued area of focus, um, for both the Racial Justice Committee and, and our work with the, uh, Maryland Municipal League Chapter. Secondly, I would like to make sure people know that Catherine Wood, um, from our Greenscape Committee has organized another Reed Warrior event. Um, this Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. Um, you can sign up with her directly. She sent a message out on the listserv. I'll also try to put it in the, in the chat here. Um, and for those that want to gather afterwards at Baby Cat, they're welcome to do so. But the first crew that turned out, um, we had a really good, uh, turnout, uh, in the park there along Silver Creek. And we hope to see the same this Saturday. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Darren?
So I, this is a little bit flexible, um, because I want to, I want to sort of interrogate Matt about traffic committee meeting stuff. And then I also want to talk about what is on his part of the agenda of the state bond bill for the parking space. So I, I don't know if that means we should just go to Connor and then I'll talk and we'll segue to staff.
I think I already did Connor. Would, he's good.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So, um. We had scheduled a meeting for January. And then we postponed it based on two things. One was we were waiting for, um, engineering drawings regarding the sidewalk on Oberon. And then the second, we were waiting for state highway. In, in, in indication of whether they would be amenable to putting signs on University Boulevard, warning of new traffic restrictions on St. Paul. Um, Matt, have you heard anything about that?
We've not heard back from State Highway Administration on that. Uh, I can follow up with Joseph. Um.
Okay.
I got him. Yeah. Go ahead.
I, I was just going to suggest that it may be the way to proceed because state highway is notoriously slow. Is to schedule a traffic committee meeting. And proceed with, you know, because we, we have an idea of what we're thinking about doing. Get a recommendation from the traffic committee. That says, you know, based contingent on state highway supporting this and, and allowing us to move forward with that sort of a restriction. Um, we want to recommend it to the council. And that way we don't have to wait and then schedule a traffic committee meeting and then come back to the council with it. So that, that's something that, you know, if anybody has thoughts on that, I'd, I'd be curious, uh, that, that, that would be my preference to proceeding. So that, that's something, you know, if anybody has thoughts on that, I'd be curious, uh, that, that, that would be my preference to proceeding.
That's fine, because we'll be, we'll be moving the signs, so we'll want the traffic committee to make a recommendation on that before we bring it back to the full council. Um, and this was actually at the recommendation of MCDOT to move the signs and to put a no left turn on westbound university, prevent vehicles from turning south on St. Paul between, um, 6:00 AM and 9:30 AM in the morning.
So let, let, let's go ahead and get a traffic committee meeting back on the calendar. And then the second, I'm going to steal your thunder a little bit from your number one about the state bond bill.
I was going to defer to you anyways, so go.
I, first, I'll, I'll, I'll take it, and Leslie's here, and I know she wants to get back to, uh, things in, in Kensington Estates. Um, one of the things that is, you know, because I, I, that, every project we hear, traffic, parking, and schools. And, and the, the somewhat unique opportunity that we have with the flats is, let me, let me make a contrast. Knoll's Manor, Silver Creek, the apartment building across the street, took advantage of every discount on, for parking spaces available to them. So first, there was a discount for it being an affordable building. And then there was a discount for it being a senior building. And so what they ended up with are, you know, I think of, of an inadequate number of parked spaces for, what's that? Now, it was, it, it, you know, satisfied the county regulations, and it was approved. And I think it's by and large been a success. One of the opportunities of the flats building is excess parking. Now, part of the reason they need excess parking is because the building next door, um, Wine and Company, and, and that, that building has been, you know, overly successful, and they, they have excess parking needs. But the other reason we need the excess parking is that as you go up Summit Avenue, um, there are a number, I mean, I'm, I don't even know what all the businesses are named, but Red Ginger, for example. They're all fairly small parcels that are individually and separately owned. And so they are unlikely to be able to redevelop without shared parking in the vicinity. And so when we originally talked to this developer about providing excess parking, um, you know, his obvious answer was, well, you know, help me pay for it. And what is pending in the legislature now is a parking bond bill where the state would provide some financial assistance to the town for the purpose of supporting parking in that building. The advantage of providing it to the town is that we would have a say on how those spaces would be allocated. Should they be metered, or should they not? There, there are arguments on both sides. If you meter the parking, if you restrict it to two hours, you encourage, um, turnover. And so you, what you would not want in, you would not want somebody to come in and park for eight hours or 24 hours and go, you know, live at, at, um, Silver Creek and, and, you know, use that as their parking for free. So there are arguments to be made for either way, but the point is we, we get a seat at the table by having that money to contribute towards the, the excess parking at that site. So the reason I'm bringing it to the council is that, um, we will be required to provide some, I think we're going to be required to provide some sort of substantiation for this bond by, I think it's March 7th. Pretty sure it's March 7th, which is before our next town council meeting. So I guess what I'm looking for from the council is support for this bond, and, and we call it a bond, but it, it's money that would not have to be repaid. And then just sort of authorization for Matt and town staff to submit the additional, um, documentation that might be needed to support this, this request for money. So, questions or anything?
I don't have any questions. I, I, I mean, thank you. I think you explained it very, very clearly, and I've, um, I guess the one point is just to between the getting the documentation or whatever needs to be supported to get the bond, it sounds like it's money that, we could definitely use for this purpose, but between that and then how we negotiate the, the, the spots, will there be another opportunity for us to provide input on what, you know, what we would want to negotiate, or how does the negotiation work?
Sure. So I, I, my, my, I'm a little bit new to this, but my rec, my understanding is that the bond, it's a part-time legislature. So they'll be out of session by the end of March. The money that they would provide would be actually funded, I think it's July 1st.
It has to go through the Board of Public Works, I think, to, to, to actually be approved. Is that right, Matt?
I don't know about that part of it.
I thought everything that was giving out money.
Go up July 1st, and, and in that time period, we would negotiate, we, the money comes to us. If we don't reach an, an agreement with the developer, then the money doesn't go to the developer. If it does, if we reach an agreement where we say we get, I'll just make it up, 25 spots, and that they're two-hour parking spots, then everybody's happy. The developer saves a little money on that. He provides, um, excess parking over beyond what his project would require. If he doesn't, I don't know, I guess we give the money back to the state.
Uh, if I can build on needs, I don't know if this is where you were going, Nate, but would, um, would we ratify the bonds, since the money would come to the town of Kensington, and through us, the money would go to this project? Would it be like a declaration of covenants on the negotiated point stand that you foresee? Hey, just put it in writing, this is the number of spots, or how the spots would metered, or, but will there be a formal agreement between the developer and the town in exchange for the funds from the bond bill?
I, that's my understanding that, and, and so we had a, a dry run of this, um, I want to say about a year ago. And, and Nate knows, knows about this. So that we, um, we, we have this pot of money that, uh, some private litigants obtained from Silver Creek Project. $100,000. Um, but it's earmarked and available to us not to provide parking, but to provide parking enforcement. And we had contemplated using that money in a similar manner where we negotiate a contract between the town and the developer, which, to your point, Connor, would have to run with the property. It's not, he couldn't be, yeah, excused from it by selling the property to, to somebody else. Um, so I, I think we're already, we, we sort of have a pathway. What we don't have is, um, money to bring to the table. And, and that's what the bond would, would be a substitute for that other pot of money.
Thank you. Um, I think it's a great idea. I think we should move it forward.
Okay, any other questions or support?
I support maybe forward, too.
Okay.
Uh, I'm also in support. I, I'm trying to do some quick research on it. I don't see that it needs to go to the public, the, the Board of Public Works.
Okay.
Uh, there, and yes, there's a March, there's a hard March 7th deadline for submissions, uh, because from there, it goes to, you know, a Senate Budget and Taxation Committee meeting, a House Appropriations Committee meeting, uh, where these are, are joint hearings on these, uh, bond initiatives. Then a late March, early April timeframe for each of the chambers to vote on those, um, uh, bond bills and amend them into the capital budget bill. Um, and then the chambers vote on the final capital budget bill in mid-April. And then the effective date for the capital budget bill is June 1st. So thus why there's a necessity to, uh, have this in March, no later than March 7th.
Okay, I do have a question in the audience, so let me take that. Uh, Leslie Maxim?
Uh, my question is, is there just a general idea of, of what amount that bond would be for, just even a ballpark?
Yeah, unfortunately, it, it ultimately comes down to what's politically palatable to the committee and the legislature. I, I think that, um, it's in the order of maybe a million dollars, which I, I believe is about half of the actual cost of the spots. But, you know, again, I don't know if they will fund it all or fund a portion of it. Um, you know, there are a lot of bond requests, and, and Matt's going to talk about another one, but, but, when, when we finally let him talk.
So, and did you say that money would be tied only to that development? For instance, if we couldn't work something out with the developer, could we acquire a, one of those businesses down the street and use it for parking, or inquire another nearby area that we could use it for parking, or would the bond only be for that particular property?
I don't think they're transformable, transferable, excuse me.
I, yeah, I don't, I, but I don't think it's transferable. I don't think it's given in, in general terms. I think it's given in terms, because this, this project was approved with excess parking. And the basis for the bond is that, is to fund the excess parking in this location. We, we know we have other places in town where there's a shortage of parking. Down Howard Avenue, you know, if you get a proposal to redevelop some of those, um, you know, you're going to run into the same parking issues. Uh, but I, my understanding is that this bond request is for money for this set of parking spaces in this building.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Leslie, great.
Hi, thank you, and I'm sorry, I just had a question. It's really, because I'm looking at the staff report on the parking, which is, I assume you all have, are thinking about, and it says they're providing 166 spaces. And will that be inclusive of some of the parking spots that they'll be losing probably behind Knoll Station, and sort of what input, like, again, it goes back to how much is going to be for public, and then how much for the residential vehicle parking, the commercial vehicle parking, and then these hotel rooms? So it's just something to think about when you're moving forward with the bond and what input you can have, because I think it would be beneficial.
Right, yeah, absolutely. And so that's part of the negotiation is, are we going to negotiate for 25 spots? Are we going to negotiate for 40 spots? Um, you know, that the general sense from of the cost of a parking spot in a, in a structure is 20 to 25,000. Now, that was probably pre-inflation, but, um, and so we, we sort of have to think about what, what, what we could reasonably ask for. Um, but I certainly have in my mind that we want to relieve some of the excess parking demand at Silver Creek. We want to, uh, relieve some of the excess parking demand at Knoll Station. And we want to reserve the possibility for redevelopment as you go further north on Summit Avenue. I don't know what that.
Right, I'm just looking at these numbers, and I think that it may be there, you may want more space than, I mean, those numbers might add up to more space than there are space in that parking lot, at least as currently in this report. That's all I'm saying. So you're the negotiator, so.
You got to get the bond first, and then you negotiate, so. Okay, all right, well, thank you, Leslie. All right, I don't see any other hands, so, uh, it sounds like the council has, uh, given, uh, support to support the, um, the bond bill.
We need, uh, to give you authority to, you know, complete the process or to support the process, or, or just.
Well, we have to provide a letter, correct, and support?
We're going to have to take guidance from the senator delegates that are, are, you know, helping us with this. I don't know if it's going to be a letter. I think what, I mean, my understanding is that there's going to be, yes, something that says we will administer these funds in furtherance of the bond purpose.
Okay.
I just don't know what else they might.
Is it going to require Sue Ellen to, to write something or to look at something, Matt? Do you know?
So we're not sure. Uh, staff's inquired with State Senator Wall Striker for clarification, not only on this bond bill, uh, and what are recommendations, um, and how to proceed with this is, but we also are asking for a bond bill for future architectural and engineering needs for a future public works facility. Um, so we've sent that over to State Senator Wall Striker and his chief of staff, and hopefully we get a, get an answer back in the next day or two. Um, and then we'll be able to provide a little more clarity. Um, but number two on the list is, uh, you know, just support from the council to see if, um, if possible, we can move forward with another bond bill for engineering and architectural for a future public work facility. So I don't have a number right now. This is, these are, I have a lot of questions for State Senator Wall Striker. Um, uh, with both potential bond bills, but we'll definitely provide an update to the council and at the March meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have any problem with the second bond bill? I would hope not.
I don't have a problem, just curious, just, I don't want to prolong the meeting, but, um, when's the last time we accessed the bond bill from the town, and why aren't we doing this more frequently?
I don't, I can't remember doing a bond bill before.
Uh, other than the bond bills for Noise Children's Library, I don't remember in, in, you know, recently being involved in any.
Well, maybe it's something we should just regularly do, um, a good practice.
Well, I think that.
It's available.
And Nate, is that the word bond used to mean that you have to pay it back?
I know.
Necessarily, we, we were in a fairly good financial shape to, you know, not ha- have to borrow money and then pay it back. And because of the pandemic and because of the evolving, you know, uh, the way these things are administered, it's, it's, um, not required to be paid back. So certainly, I think this is something we want to focus on in the future, because other people are, and, and I, I think that a lot of the requests that we make have, you know, very legitimate, public-minded purposes.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
My, I, my one question from Matt. Matt, do you require any official action from us on this?
I don't think so. I just want you to know I'm doing it. It's public.
Well, talk to, um, yeah, talk to Wall Striker's, um, staff. And whatever we're required to do, just send that out, and we can, um, you know, add that to, uh, you know, update at the next meeting of what was required.
Yeah, I, I should be able to provide an update before then, and then we'll provide one to the public at the March meeting, so.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay, good. All right, thank you very much. Right, um.
I have one more.
Oh, well.
Right, I'm there, um.
Go ahead.
Uh, Kensington Car Show?
Yes.
Um, we had a request from Mario Bruno, the owner of Kensington Service Center. Um, he would like to proceed with the Kensington Car Show. Uh, he has asked, uh, the date to be, um, Saturday, uh, Saturday, April 29th, with a rain date of Sunday, April 30th. Um, this would be one week after the, um, Kensington Day of the Book Festival. Um, I would just like some, um, feedback from the council on if they're okay with the date. Uh, the Kensington Car Show would shut down Howard Avenue from Connecticut Avenue down to Montgomery. Uh, we would be required to file a permit application with the State Highway Administration, because we will be required to close the turn lane on Connecticut, Connecticut, Connecticut Avenue. Um, so I just need permission to move forward.
I have heard from some businesses that, that love the car show, and some that don't love the car show. I've heard of both. Um, it does bring in, uh, we haven't done it in what, four years? At least four years. Um, I, I personally love to see it come back. I mean, I'm not a big car person, but I, I just love the amount of people that it brings into our town. I, I, I find it difficult to find the negative that some of our businesses have, but, um, that would be, uh, I, I mean, I'd. that would be, uh, I, I mean, I'd like to support it.
Matt, uh, my question, when you, I'm just trying to remember, I was looking at the calendar and remember that there was an issue with the calendar at the moment. But the, the date for the day of the book, when you say it's one week after, is the day of the book the 22nd?
No, the third, it's Sunday.
So Sunday, um, and then the car show would be the following Saturday, which is six days later. The rain date would be the 30th for the car show. We would have to move the farmer's market to the North Side Metropolitan Parking Lot because the farmer's market hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The car show will start, you know, they'll have staff closing down streets probably around 6:30, 7:00 AM. And they'll probably run to about 3:00 in the afternoon.
And we did do this one time before where we moved the farmer's market to the North Side. Because of the car show? Yeah, because they use the parking lot for food trucks and, oh, great, forgot.
And the vendors just wouldn't be able to get out in the middle of the car show.
Right. I'm wondering if the car show could be something that we do every three years? So it's not a yearly thing. Maybe that'll make some people unhappy, but.
I like, we do it every.
What's that?
Three months. I like the car, give it our three, three months, but good.
Um, I, I mean, I am very supportive of our town events. And I have definitely heard and spoken with business owners who, like you said, Tracy, are not as big a fans. But there's just as equally those who work to set their shops up to be successful during the event. And I found, I mean, it's hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of people that have come through the car show and go through the stores and have found it to be very good for their business. But I think it's another way to attract people to our town and make them aware of our businesses that they might not otherwise be aware of.
Right, I mean, that's, that, yeah, they, uh, it may be more difficult for your normal, uh, customers to come in on that day. But yet, on the other hand, you've got thousands of people walking down the street that are, you know, who aren't really into cars, that are, came with somebody who's into cars. And it's like, wow, look at all this great stuff, you know? I mean, they're going to come back, but, um, you know, we, the, the Mario is a business owner in our town. He's not a stranger. He's not somebody who's just came in, you know, from Nevada and said, oh, I want to do car show here in Kensington. This is, this is one of our businesses. And I, we have accommodated other businesses, you know, whether it was a fall festival, whether it's the day of the book. I just feel like we should be equally supportive. And we actually do have quite, um, a, I don't know if I'd say thriving, but we have a car, a lot of car businesses here in Kensington. And, you know, I'd be hard pressed to give them another location. I really would. I'm not sure where else we could do it.
I mean, if you just count the number of times we accommodate gigs, I think that an annual car show is, is supportable. Now, I don't know if he wants to do it that often, but I, I found it to be a really popular event.
I support it. Okay. Nate?
Yeah, I don't think, I think everyone supports it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, so let's, uh, put it for the 29th with the 30th as the backup date for, um, rain.
Thank you, council.
Okay, good. All right, um, so, let's see, um, I didn't get a chance because Darren dropped down into the town manager and staff stuff. So I was going to say a couple of little things under my report. Most of them are reminder dates. And council, I'll just send you, it's not as long as the one I gave you before, but there are some dates that are coming up, particularly, um, the, in March, we have the MML meeting with the County Council. So I'm hoping if, you know, you're available that evening, that you'll be able to come. Um, also, uh, the Girl Scout event that I attended last Friday, it's actually not going to be this Friday. So you guys are off the hook. Um, they, I talked to Tara, she wants to do it after they've picked their project. And then so more than likely, it's April 3rd. But I'll, I'll confirm that with her and I'll just CC you on an email to her. And so, um, they're just looking for some support for the girls as they, and she loves the fact that they're going for their bronze project. And we're going for our bronze certification. So it just seems to really, she just loves that. So, um, the kids were lovely. And I haven't attended a Girl Scout meeting, um, in a long time. I did do a Daisy thing, but not, not older girls. So it was, it was actually very nice. So I'll, I'll let you know about that one. But nobody's on the hook for this Friday, so we're good. Um, also, I, I was in Margaret Goldsboro's. I stopped by to make sure she knew about the car show. And there was a man there buying something and he said to the, to the fellow on the other side, because Margaret, actually, she just had her hip replaced, so she's recovering from that. And he goes, this is such a lovely town. And I was like, I couldn't help but say, yes, it is. He was, but he was just raving about how great, he lives in Woodside and he loves coming to the town of Kensington to do his shopping. And he goes to our post office now because he's afraid to put his mail in mailboxes. So he comes to our post office. So he's in town a lot now. So it was just really cool though, to, to have a visitor in town, just make that comment to, uh, to the gentleman who was holding down the fort for Margaret. And it was just really, it was funny, but, uh, it was, it was great. So, okay, so I will send you those dates. And did I send everybody or just Ann the link for M, um, MMCs? Because they had Marcus Jones, the recording. Did I send everybody that? If you get a chance, listen to it, it was very good. Because he does talk about the statistics and some other issues that are going on with the police. So if you get a chance, please listen in on that. And Monique did a really nice job, um, doing that. Darren and I, um, attended and, um, it was very good. Okay, so let's go down to ordinance, resolutions and regulations. Matt?
Um, council, uh, before you is resolution number R dash zero three dash 2023, a resolution of the Kensington Town Council confirming appointments made by the mayor to the town Ethics Commission. Following the passing of Jack Gaffey, we are required to, uh, we make a replacement to the Ethics Commission. And Dave Bodett has also asked to step away. So Deborah Eckert will be replacing, um, Jack Gaffey, I'm sorry, um, Dave Bodett for the remainder of his term. And then we will be reappointing him beginning April 1st through 2025. And Mike McCurry will be replacing the remainder of Jack Gaffey's term, which will run through April 1st, 2024.
Okay, I had a little freeze on, I think, on my end. Did, did you say Tina was going, she wants, she'll be chair, correct?
Tina will remain on the committee and she will be the acting chair, yes.
Great. Okay, um, I, I sent the, this out to the council earlier and I didn't hear from anyone that they had any concerns or questions about the people that, um, we're appointing. So, um, does anybody in the audience have any, um, questions regarding the appointing to the Ethics Committee? Okay, not seeing any hands. So can we get a motion on the resolution?
I'll make a resolution to approve resolution number R dash zero three dash 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Great, thank you very much. Matt?
Thank, thank you, council. Uh, Alex is going to share her screen. So the public can see resolution R dash zero four dash 2023. And this was not included in the public documents. Uh, the town attorney was making some changes to the contract agreement, uh, with Compost Crew, uh, which will allow for weekly collections at Town Hall location. However, that, that could, that could change possibly. But right now it will be Town Hall for weekly collections, uh, which will have two 65-gallon toders located. There is a fee to the town. In addition to that, um, there is a quarterly cleanout of the toders by Compost, Compost Crew. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Counsel, does anybody have any, um, questions regarding the resolution?
Uh, no questions. Obviously, I'm going to be very supportive of this, as Nate and I have been working on this for a little while. The idea is to try and find a location within town for those who have too small of compost to warrant their own separate subscription or just desire to be able to participate, but do not want to subscribe to home-based composting. So we've been working with this vendor as they are, the vendor that's working our pilot right now throughout the town for house, home-based, um, compost pickup. And, uh, what, what I like is the town crew has built a shelter. We, we've worked to make sure that, um, any such site that we set up is easy to access, easy to store, um, protects the scraps from, you know, raccoons, squirrels, any other type of vermin. Uh, but then as well through the program, as Matt mentioned, but I think is worth highlighting a second time, there's actually a component where every quarter, it's, uh, if I understand, it's even more than just washing them out. They will, they'll just swap out those containers, take them back, clean them up. As a way, again, to just make sure that, uh, these, it's as clean a process as possible. So, um, I think we're going to start a Town Hall and we may identify another site, you know, centrally located within the town, easily accessible that people frequent often in the future. But I'm very supportive of it.
Okay, so Baby Cat wants to have a compost, uh, area there?
Hey.
Where people frequent often.
I mean, you know, maybe, maybe there's something to be said for, you know, uh, bins for beers.
Um, so what we're going to need to do is, uh, you or Nate are both, uh, put together a, um, an article for the next journal, so people know where it is and what the deal is. So, um, Carrie Anne's on vacation this week, but, um, we should have a probably deadline around the second week in March, because we'll want it to come out. Uh, it'll be an April issue.
All right, so article before next council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, Nate, we'll get, I'll get with you and we'll work on that.
Okay, I, I think you've written these things before, so.
Yeah.
Now it's here and here it is and here's the deal.
When we cite it here, I know right now, the, um, Matt, the shed, the structure is just at the back of the parking lot. Is that where it is right now? Is that where we're going to stay? Are you going to reposition it within the parking lot?
We will probably reposition it. There's a, uh, we need to figure out what's going on with our HVAC units in the drill hall first.
Yeah.
The new unit or units possibly will need to be placed in the parking lot. We are figuring that out right now with one of the vendors that's providing a, a quote. In addition to we store, uh, some bricks back there, so we'll find a location. And I forgot to mention, uh, this is for one, one-year term. So this is a one-year term, so.
Okay, uh, yeah, as we work on that, just as Nate and I, it'd be great if we can tell them like, it's here in the parking lot. So we'll work with you to get that location once you work out the other stuff.
Okay.
And Connor, we're just going to want to make sure that it, when we write the article, back to the sustainable Kensington issue of documenting and making sure we have everything to submit with our certification process. But you and I can already work on making sure we tick all those boxes for this because the compost, public compost offering is one of the actions. So we can just make sure that we do it the right way.
Terrific, yeah, bring all that knowledge and so perfect. I like where you're, you're thinking.
Okay, great. Um, Darren or Ann, did you have any comments?
Yeah, um, the resolution is fine and I'm very supportive of Compost Crew. I'm a customer. I was thinking, could I convince my kids to tote the compost across the street to Town Hall? And they probably prefer to use the one at our house. Um, but one question I had, and this is something that we can discuss, you know, more in depth later, is whether they're going to be monitoring, um, and sharing sort of the usage and, I guess, weighing, you know, what's coming out so we can keep track of how people are participating. And then down the road, I know there's been some talk about how we engage restaurants with food waste composting. And Nate, we can talk about this. Maybe that's something that we could enlist, um, sustainable Kensington team members to help with and maybe going and talking to some of our restaurant managers about what would make it possible for them to participate. So those are just some of the thoughts on my mind about, because I want to make sure that if we were putting the effort into establishing this benefit, that we really see the usage and the uptake that, that we could have. So I'm just thinking about the ways that we can monitor and really promote using it in the town.
Yeah, to that, um, if, in that agreement, you'll see, one of the things that, that was asked for, but it's somewhat standard in their practice, their municipal practice is reports. So, well, we, I, I don't foresee how, and I will ask them, uh, but how they will get a count other than if you type a bag and they can tell you 12 bags were left. But that's not even that important. What is important is the pound or tonnage. Um, and so when they take the cans, they weigh that material. And so we will get reports on usage based on the material, which is the more important metric than, you know, one person could dump 80 pounds of stuff, one person could dump eight ounces of stuff. What matters is the total, um, diversion of food waste.
And, and this is, they take like pizza boxes, right? That have, they, they want things that have food.
Yes, and, and we'll make sure to, there's a great list that we've used before from them in previous articles that, you know, we'll work with Carrie Anne on space for the, the March-April, uh, Town Journal. But it's another, it's a very easy graphic that says, here's what's compostable, here's what's not. Uh, but one of those education things was pizza boxes. If your pizza box is all used and greasy, it's compostable. It's not recyclable. And that's actually, it's normally, a lot of people think, oh, I recycle pizza boxes. You actually can't. Uh, they end up getting diverted from recycling to garbage, but they are fully compostable. And, and we set ours out on Fridays when the home-based picker comes by and they love them, they take them away.
No, that's great. I mean, I know the, the Brookwood girls, they get pizza on Fridays and, you know, like 15 boxes of pizza go right into the dumpster. And it could instead go into the recycling or the composting.
Correct.
Because they can't put it in with the cardboard, because it's contaminated.
You can put the lids in if there's no grease on them.
Yeah, that's, that requires you to tear them apart.
Well, that, they're now, they, if you look at them, they're, they're terrible.
Okay, I, I'm lucky to get them to the dumpster, but I'm not going to sit there.
I'm just saying, technically canned if they don't have grease.
Yeah. Right.
To add to that, um, Connor made me think that we might need to add, um, a page to the town website so that people, if they have to go digging for information about the compost offering, they don't.
Actually, that's a great idea. We could put that, uh, under a header. Once we basically take your article and then make a page or a link. So that would be good. So Alex, I can't see you, but make a note of that, that we're going to want to add it to the website.
You got it.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I can't see hands. We can, I think we can take down the resolution now. Okay, does anybody have any questions about this resolution? Move this on. No? Okay, um, can we get? I'm sorry?
Wait for you to, I'm going to wait for you to ask.
Would you like to make a motion?
Well, if you're going to ask, yes, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
For resolution number R dash zero four 2023, a resolution of the Mayor and Council authorizing or ratifying a limited contract with Compost Crew for once-a-week compost collection at Kensington Town Hall for a term of one year.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
We will move down to public appearances. It's, anyone who's left, opportunity to speak on any topic that wasn't already on the agenda. Any hits? Uh, Joe?
Yeah, hi, thank you. Just a couple of questions. I'm wondering if there's any, I haven't heard of any updates about the Brookside Garden Apartments. This was, uh, discussed in some detail two months ago at the council meeting. And I haven't heard it much since then. Is there, does the council know anything that?
Uh, I have reached out. I have reached out to I have reached out to Mark Elrich's office. There was a little, the LDS Church did not think that they fell under the right of first refusal that the county, according to the county's code, of course, the county disagrees with that, so there's been some back and forth on that particular issue. And, but otherwise, whoever, even if the county gets the the property, there'll be, just like we did with the Bakers Union, there'll be at least 90 days where the potential owner has an opportunity to go in and, you know, make sure there's no lead, make sure there's no asbestos, you know, do a real inspection of the property before they would actually settle on it, so. That's the only update I have.
Were there other bidders? Do you know? Or does anyone?
There were other bidders. I don't know how many though.
And the other question is, I just wonder if the town manager has any updates on the South Side Bridge Repair Projects that have been sort of periodically discussed, and I just wonder where we stand on it.
The requests for informations are due by the, the potential bidders by Friday. And then the bids are due the following Friday, and we should be awarding a contractor, March 13th, at the town council meeting.
Good, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any other hands. Okay. Council, just so you're aware, I am going to the Maryland Mayor's Association meeting in Annapolis Wednesday evening, and I will be back on Friday at some point, so I am available by phone. But Connor, you can be the
I'm here.
Are you there?
Matt, let's sign some checks.
We'll save you a check.
They seem to handle that quite nicely without me, so.
Can I, can I at least, like, bring down a flag or something?
I know. We'll, we'll find something for you to do. So, but anyway, these are good meetings. We do get to meet with the governor. We get to meet with a lot of, it'll be a little bit different, because typically you meet with the head of this SHA, but I don't know since we just appointed, you know, they're just getting appointed, so, anyway, but it's, it's typically a pretty good meeting. So, okay, there's nothing else that we're gonna discuss?
While you are there and meeting with the governor, will you make sure to invite him to our Labor Day parade?
I will, absolutely, of course, yeah, that he's always welcome to Kensington.
And on that, on that note, as long as you're handing out invitations, Jamie Boston convened the first Juneteenth planning meeting.
Oh.
Stuganda recommended that we invite Governor Moore, so you can mention, I believe it's going to be Saturday, June 17th.
Seventeenth, okay. Great. Okay, are we doing a rain date for that? Would it be?
We had some discussion about it. Not positive. We settled on either Sunday, which is Father's Day, or Monday, which is the actual federal holiday.
Okay, well, don't forget you have to come to the council to waive the alcohol if you're planning on doing that.
Yeah.
I won't make it as formal if you need a request for electricity from my house. I now, I've now installed an outlet right at my front door, and you can just walk up and plug in.
Perfect.
Nice, okay. All right, well, I need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great, okay, Connor, lock up Town Hall, turn out all the lights, and you have a short ride home. So, all right, thank you all.
Bye, everybody. Have a good week.
Bye, good night.
On Annapolis, Tracy.
Thank you.